Part of the reason why they're going to be protesting at the school board, yes, last night, when this happened, was because they were going to be discussing, debating, the vaccine mandate, considering that there's likely going to be a vaccine available for five to 12 years. Right, so the Pfizer one, similarly to what happened when, back in like January, I think it was, when they were first starting to release that the vaccines were looking good, they had like the press releases, sort of like prior to it being officially peer reviewed. Similar things are coming out like that, showing that there's a safe and effective Pfizer vaccine for children. And I think, I think, what's his name, Fauci came out saying that likely kids will start getting vaccinated before Halloween. Likely, if it all pans out, is how he put it. So, again, the, the, the right, if you didn't hear, my wife just cheered. But as everything, like, he's gonna be quoted out of context if that doesn't come to pass. But he said, if it all looks the way that they're showing that it works, then, good, you know? But the other thing that was being discussed at this meeting was whether or not there should be police officers at schools around. And this was an issue that Black Lives Matter was pushing to have them removed. I couldn't find any information about the end decision of this, but it was being discussed at the school board meeting last night. And again, that would have been something that I would have liked to have been notified about. And like, maybe, you know, it would be nice if we had the community support to organize for that, or, or the, the groups in place that like really put pressure on issues like that, and maybe protest for that. But instead, what we get is these like assholes, who are mad about their lack of ability to spread a disease. They're the ones who are angry and yelling at the school board, and not us for like, maybe we don't need police in schools. Maybe that would be a better thing to yell at the school for. And I know they've had opposition to that in the past, so I don't, I think they would have still like been bros sending the police there. And like, things like this, actually having these people show up, I think, and having them yell has its own like negative ramifications that go beyond just the fact that they're wanting to spread disease. But I think it does affect liberals in a way who go, well, maybe we do need the police. If these people are gonna be showing up at our schools and yelling at our kids, then maybe we do need the police there. And we, but it's like, again, this will eventually die down and go away. And we'll be left with police on campuses abusing their powers. And abusing kids. Which is usually how this goes. But maybe we shouldn't make decisions based on these, uh, these. And again, maybe we should just like find them so severely, it becomes a financial liability for them to show up to the shit. Okay? I think that's the reason. So what do we have here? If we wanna know who, who organized yesterday's protest, this is if, if you're not familiar with this face down here. This is Kristin Nagel. She is a, was a London nurse. She eventually was fired, in part because she decided in the middle of a pandemic to cross the border in ways that like skirted legality in order to show up at a rally in Washington DC on January 6th, when a bunch of white nationalists decided they wanted to try to pretend to take over the United States government, and failed miserably. He was there! Kristin Nagel came all the way from London, Ontario to Washington DC. And granted, she didn't like scale the walls, she didn't break windows, she didn't climb into the Capitol building. But she attended a, like an anti-vaccine, anti-mask rally with people like Dell Bigtree, who's a hardcore anti-vaxxer, who's been in the anti-vax community like during Wakefield and all that shit, like the MMR causes autism era of anti-vaccine and vaccine denial. And so she was hanging out with them at like a side, so it was like, uh, trying to think of a Lollapalooza or Warped Tour. You know, you got your main stage event, so you got like Donald Trump on the main stage telling people to go ransack the Capitol. But then you had like the anti-vaxxers on like a side stage playing to a smaller, yet equally, uh, disturbed crowd. Some of which probably then participated in it. But the least that we can say about Kristin Nagel is she probably didn't actually storm the Capitol. But she was there. And because she went to that, she got fired. So in her time now, having been a disgraced nurse who, who left the country to participate in a bunch of bullshit internationally. She's resigned, or not resigned, she was fired, but now she's, uh, organizing protests outside of school boards. And so here we get a little video with someone named McNulty. Now, I know absolutely nothing about McNulty. All I know is that the people who have been sharing this image do not speak too kindly to McNulty. And given that he's giving this like chat with Nagel, probably, probably not a great person. Let's, let's hear what they have to say. There's only 18 seconds.
In London, they're looking at now starting Pfizer for five-year-olds. And today we're going to a school board meeting because the trustees are gonna vote on mandating the injections on 12 and up to attend school. So that's happening today. So that's gonna get very real for a lot of people. And, and yeah, five and up. So in London, they're looking at now starting.
So they were going to vote on the 12 and up. And it wasn't, it wasn't just that they're increase or like they're going to mandate 12 and up. The actual thing, which is interesting that they never bring this up. But it's not just about voting to have them vaccinated for COVID. It was to add the COVID vaccines to the list of already mandated vaccines for kids to attend high school. Or grade school, 12 and up. Not great, it's aged 12, right? Because 12-year-olds can get vaccinated with Pfizer. And so it's like for all these people and their vaccine denial, and their claims that it violates the Ontario Human Rights Code, or whatever bullshit that they wanna say. There's already a list of mandated vaccines that the COVID vaccine is simply being added to. The horror! Oh no! So because of that, they were gonna do their protest, okay? Now, we're gonna read it, but I just wanted to highlight that great anti-fascist colleagues, a bunch of people I know contacted the school board. And so they knew about this. They could have had police already there to stop what became an unruly event. But instead, they were just unprepared, apparently, even though they were informed by multiple people that this was coming. And they knew it was coming. And still they did absolutely. So I just wanted to highlight. And now we get to the article. Let's see, let's see what happened. No mandatory vax. Like, again, like there's been mandatory vaxes for a long time, a long time. Even when I was a kid. I remember fun, fun ancient Jody history event. When the year, so it was the summer before high school, so grade nine. And I think you needed, you needed a vaccine. I wanna say. Thank you for following me. I hope you're not a bot, but thank you for following me. Mazumi 2. When I was, so I think it was meningitis. I think. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was meningitis. But we, chat if not bot. Chat if not bot.
I feel like, I thought it was one of the hep ones. Was it? Like Hep C and created or something?
I know there was a meningitis in grade five, but I feel like this was like a meningitis booster, like. Again, for all the people who are complaining about boosters, I can talk, but I'm still a bot. The only reason Mazumi is, because we get a lot of bots, and it's always the numbers and underscores and all that that like get me worried that it's, it's a bot. Go, you know, sorry.
Oh, what was it? Oh, I, my doctor has assured me because I've had to ask multiple times, like I'm up to date on my shots. I don't remember getting a single fucking one in high school or elementary school.
You don't?
No. It, also like I have a horrific memory, so like it could just be that I totally like blanked out on it. But I don't remember any of them.
I remember.
I do distinctly remember not getting one when a bunch of other people were getting one. But maybe I went to the doctors for that. I don't know.
I remember most of my vaccines being at like the doctor's office. I remember one time getting vaccinated at school in like grade six, if that's right. But I, I had a history with with just having like weird reactions to vaccines or whatever, and yet I still get them everyone, no matter what. But the one, the one interesting thing is this time, so what happened was, we knew, my parents went away on vacation and left me and my brother at home. They were going somewhere like, uh, I, I had an irrational fear of airplanes, so I refused to go anywhere on airplanes when I was younger. So my parents went to like Cuba or some shit, I don't know. I didn't, and I was like, I'm not getting on a plane, so I didn't go. And I, and I think my brother, like, he's three years older than me, he, he didn't wanna go or something either. And so we just stayed back while they went on their vacation. But they told us, they were like, and it was like the last week of August, right? So like it was right before the school started. They were like, you need to get this vaccine. And so they left it up to my brother to like remind us to go to the doctors to get the vaccination. And so we had it booked and everything. And then the day, the day we were supposed to get it, I remember apparently he busts into my room and he goes, "Jody, wake the fuck up! We gotta go get our vaccine, we're late!" And of course, like neither of us drive. We, we like, I run out of bed, I'm pulling on my clothes, get on a bicycle, and I'm driving, we, we ride our bikes, like pedaling at like as fast as we can to get to the doctor's office, which is like pretty far away, like it would have been like a 10, 15 minute drive. But like we, we biked there. And we get to the doctor's office, fucking exhausted, go in, and they give me the, the shot. And I then get up, and as we're leaving the doctor's office, I are not like the, the room where they gave me the vaccine, so we're not out of the office itself. I fainted while walking and continued to walk, but then started to fall over and walk into a wall. And the only thing I remember is like coming to with all the, like the doctors around me, just, "Are you alright, are you alright?" And I had to stay there for a while while they gave me like orange juice and like other stuff. And so like that was likely what happened, was the fact that like I didn't eat breakfast, I had, it was, and I just bicycled for like 32, 30 minutes to an hour, however long it took us to get there. But but I remember it was so important that I went and got the vaccine so I could go to high school, that I rushed there because my brother forgot to wake me up and then fainted. Fun, fun little story.
Nice. Um, yeah, Mazumi generally like, honestly, we don't even get that many anti-vax bullshit. We get more like racists, where it's like spamming Cecil Road stuff and like weird other bullshit. Yeah. Jody, did you get the H1N1 vaccine? Also, did anybody in chat? Cause like that one, I don't, I think I know like two people who got it.
Got the vaccine? I definitely got the vaccine.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, I think my wife actually got the vaccine. But it was before I met her. I think it was like, might have been the year or two before we met was H1N1. Wasn't it like 2008 or 2009?
Oh, that fucks me up. I don't like that you guys have known each other for that long. It was like grade four or five.
Yeah, we, we've, it's been over 10 years. 2010 is when we first started seeing each other.
That's fucked up.
We have kids. Whatever kids in six years old. It's not, it's not that fucked up when you think about it. No.
I don't know.
And Mary, all I have to say is, I hope you're joking. And get vaccinated. Stop spreading disease. Probably the best thing to do. People now are freaking out that the government has access to your vaccine information, like it's an invasion of privacy. But I would absolutely want them to tell me what vaccines I might be missing. Well, not only that, like the schools have access to your vaccine information, uh, your doctor has, like, your, your medical records, which is stored by the government health officials, uh, store that information. That and like, I used to carry around in my pocket the, the thing that had the checkmarks showing all the vaccines that I had. And people used to carry that paper around with them, like everywhere. It's, uh, yeah, I don't know, like, I don't know why everyone thinks like that's such a, like, I don't know like what privacy is being revealed there. "I'm, I'm protected from the disease, and with that information, we will destroy you." Like, why? Why? You have to have a CVS or doctor close, right? Oh, this is, uh, oh my god! Like, all right, so you're complaining about the time, the time to get the vaccine? It's not even an hour, it's like, there's no lineups now, just fucking go in and get it. Bring a book. I think, what did I, I was reading.
Jody, stop. No engagement, no engagement.
Fair, fair. I'll stop. Uh, well, you can't pick it and have they, they check it. But yeah, it, it's just like.
I don't know, it's pretty easy to make a fake PDF, like.
Yeah. Well, I mean, eventually they're gonna translate it into some sort of like app or like QR code, which like might be a little bit more harder to fake, I don't know. But like right now, it's just the PDF. I just came, is there an anti-vax? We don't know, it could just be an intention. Wait, Ontario doesn't have a QR code? And not yet. I think they're gonna implement it.
Fuck off, two cards. What are you? Yeah, no, it's October like 22nd or something.
Why are you saying fuck off to you guys? Is it just because I think, I took it as like, because I think DC is ahead of us on this.
Yeah, I know, exactly. I'm saying fuck off because you have a QR code. Oh, you have a technologically confident government? Like, die.
Listen, we have the cheese, we're Cheesecake Nation over here in Ontario, right? Cheesecake Nation representative. But yeah, I mean, like, it's, it's kind of a, like a tangent we've gone on here, but it's like, this, the fact that all this is happening over something that we do so regularly without complaint is just frustrating to me. It's super frustrating.
I hate it also because like, like in so many ways, like the focusing on individual anti-vaxxers and then just like kind of in the sense of like has propped up this movement, and then also has distracted from like the public policy failures of like the provincial governments and, you know, the fact that the, like, all of the vaccines aren't just like publicly available to whoever can make them in the world. And like, you know, that's where we're gonna be continuously getting variants from. That's where we're gonna continuously be getting like increased transmission because of, you know, global variants, because most people in the world haven't had their first vaccine yet. And it's like, I don't know, I do wish, like as important as like countering these sorts of assholes is, it's like,
Well, my message to this is like, my, my feelings right now is like, I want the, it, it's not just about like covering this the way we are. I feel like we need, we need counter protesting again, even like with those of us who are backed, which are more protected, you know? But like, it just annoys me that they feel emboldened right now and aren't receiving any pushback for this shitty behavior, you know? And I don't think the appropriate response is just have the like, the police to beat them and give like sympathetic coverage that way. But to have people just like, if, if we had like, uh, in town, what happened the, the weekend after Charlottesville, where you had Poggieta decide they were gonna hold a rally that weekend? And like a thousand of us showed up to their tent. You know, imagine if we could drown these assholes out completely with a crowd of like a thousand people. Like, it, it's not even about like, like physically showing up and physically confronting them, but just being like, no, we do not agree with these assholes, you know? And also abolish the police, like we could, you know? But like, if, if you could have that kind of show, it would be a lot better than having all the news coverage being about like protesters disrupt London School Board meeting with anti-vaccine mandate message. Like, yeah, okay, they are technically protesters, but like maybe it's like assholes disrupt London School Board meeting with anti-science message.
Mazumi, please stop responding to this person. Just let them go away. Oh my god. Um, yeah, I don't know, it was just kind of a like, it all sucks and none of it's good. And the state response to it sucks, the.
That was the other thing I was gonna say, like when you were talking earlier about like government messaging and stuff, or like just like the government response generally, like their messaging, it, it's amazing to me, even like when you, even when you compare a lot of the anti-fascist general activists and compare how they've been messaging to like Chris Mackey, like our local like public health person, right? Like, our messaging even like, in some ways has been a lot better. Like, if you had Chris Mackey right away going like, being pro mandate, like, and I'm talking about like back when like vaccines were first starting to become an issue and go like, you know? And once we have like information that this is like fully approved, and it's gone through all the processes that every other vaccine has gone through, we are going to mandate this, just like we have with every other vaccine. Or like, what, like, and been so upfront about it, but instead they, they've been playing this like, we gotta pretend to be somewhat cautious, blah, blah, blah. But it's like, then the rest of the public almost doesn't know what the fuck is going on. Or it's like, just, just be fucking direct with your messaging about the same public health measures that we've had for like ever. Like, it's amazing to me, they could even have been upfront with, with certain like talking points that other people have come up since, where it's like, just the idea of like, you've been carded at a bar before. What's the difference between being carded at a bar before you drink your alcohol and getting carded for your vaccine pass, like passport, or whatever you wanna call it, before you go to sit down at a restaurant? How are these things dissimilar, you know? They could have been so upfront about this stuff.
I genuinely like, like I think that it's just kind of like a flaw in the way that liberal democracy works, where the government can't ever be direct and honest with citizens because that is going to like, you know, just fucking, then like people might expect that of them type of thing. So they have to do this sort of like runaround of being vague and being like, you know, changing their minds all the time and like all this other bullshit. And it's like, because I don't, and I don't even think that it's like a conscious decision either. Like, it's just a like structural effect of how these governmental systems work, where it's just like, they need to be, they need to, they need people to expect as little of them as possible, because otherwise they might like have demands in the future. And they just like don't know that there is any other way to be.
I think they're also super paranoid about blowback. So they're like super cautious in ways that are like, in ways that actually make them receive more blowback. You know what I mean?
I don't know, cause like, like you look at some of the decisions that Doug Ford or Trudeau or whoever else has made, and they're fucking comfortable with blowback. Like, they know they can survive it. But then on this, because I think again, like it requires being upfront about intentions and like actually honest for once, that's just something that they're like structurally, structurally incapable of doing. And.
I, well, I wonder too if like the, because you're kind of right about like them being used to blowback, so it's not that big of a, or like it, would that be the reason why they would try to be cautious? Like, yeah, I think you won me over on that point. But then like, I'm also thinking, it's like in their liberal nature to just be like the, the freedom issue, you know what I mean? It'd be like, well, we don't wanna put anything too restrictive, so we're gonna be sort of, and we're gonna see what's gonna happen and like, you know what I mean? Where it's like.
I mean.
We, we have.
On that note, like, sorry.
Yeah, that was basically the end of my.
Yeah. On that note though, like the freedom is the freedom to do business. Like that's, that is the freedom that they're talking about, right? And so, you know, and the, at the end of the day, they're not ever going to do direct or honest things because that's, you know, that might jeopardize in some way their relationship with business and therefore their relationship with party funders and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's like,
Yeah.
Sorry, I, yeah. Corten, I do, I do agree with you, he was too much of a coward.
I do love that Chris Mackey has received some sort of. Somehow you know about him. But anyway, sorry.
What I want is for Trudeau to enact the War Measures Act for COVID. Just so that him and his dad did it in times of peace. I think that would be very like, yeah.
He's gotta go up to the mic and be like, "I'm doing it for you daddy," and then look up to the sky.
Yeah. And then somebody asks him, "How far are you willing to go in these measures to stop COVID-19?" And then Trudeau looks in the camera and says, "Just watch me." And every political commentary person just like instantly nuts in their pants.
See, I was just gonna say Justin Ling's in the audience, just, ah!
Yeah.
Alright, let's read this article, shall we?
Sure, I guess. I'm trying to avoid it.
A London, Ontario school board meeting that had COVID-19 protocols on the agenda was disrupted when police were called to deal with approximately 100 anti-vaccine protesters. TBDSB trustees were meeting Tuesday night at the One World Thames Valley International Welcome Center. That is, that is a mouthful of a building. Uh, next to Louise Harbour Public School, when they were interrupted at around 7:30 PM. Protesters gathered outside the building chanting and carrying signs, including ones that read, "Hands off our children." The crowd outside the meeting included people of all ages, including young children. One protester was seen wearing a t-shirt with PPC logo on it. The meeting got back on track once police arrived. So this is, I guess, when the police arrived. Let's see what this video footage is here.
It's open kips.
I mean, they said 100, and I guess there's a hundred there. Yeah, okay.
I think it's more than 100.
No, I mean, if, if it's only this like second here, it's. Honk for freedom though? No, none of them were in cars. Why, why would they be honking for freedom?
It's probably a leftover from their hospital protest.
They want someone to walk by and go, "Honk honk!" Honk for freedom! I'm trying to understand what that last person was saying. Something like, if this is private property.
I love that the cop is also not wearing a mask. Oh my god.
I didn't even notice that, yeah, Jesus. This one is.
If they were, yeah, if they were really intent on disrupting the. yeah, if they're really intent on disrupting the meeting, then like a car would be a better means of doing it anyways, like they could all just kind of like line up and start honking.
Yeah, I mean, like they said they had, I think the reason this article gets to why they canceled is cuz they could hear them yelling, but like that was before the police were were called, right? So I guess.
Yeah.
The TVDSB has so far followed provincial guidelines requiring staff to get vaccinated or take COVID nineteen tests twice a week and had not yet made a decision on mandatory vaccine vaccinations for students. Board said in a statement that anti-vaccine supporters have flooded social media with false reports that the board was attempting to maintain vaccination student. This is false information, said the Director of Education, Mark Fisher. The board has no authority authority to mandate student COVID nineteen vaccinations. It was never part of the agenda. Interesting. Trustees had proposed writing a letter to provincial health officials affirming that the board supports COVID nineteen vaccine. Oh, so it was uh was about uh writing a letter to the province saying they support. And that they be added to the list of compulsory vaccinations for all eligible students. That position is being advocated by Ontario Public School Boards Association. However, the motion was withdrawn by trustee Corin Ramon. So a trustee uh removed it. You know, I I love London. London is just a great place to live with wonderfully. I feel that a lot of people have had undue upset because they have misconstrued the intent of the motion. It's definitely unfortunate for those people who didn't need to worry about us mandating something and that the motion simply stated we wanted to write a letter, Ramon said during the meeting. So they they withdraw withdrew it because of public pressure. A letter, they withdrew the writing of a letter to the province saying they're okay with a mandate because of this pressure, because of what little fucking pressure we just saw eh in that. I like we 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 have thousands in the fucking street, tens of thousands of people for things like Black Lives Matter and the the pushback we get for any kind of reform whatsoever. All the fucking pushback. And all they have to do is like, hands off of our children. And then this person's like, I'm gonna withdraw the letter. What a garbage. Another motion proposed writing to local health officials for guidance on the use of wind instru- like. Okay, wait, I gotta read that again. Another motion proposed writing to local health officials for guidance on the use of wind instruments, singing and contact sport. It too was withdrawn by Ramon. Oh, my god.
Um. What was the school person's name? Cuz it's probably Rahman, with the H is pronounced a bit. Um, but I do like singing and contact sports. It's sports where you sing and contact.
Yeah, the use of the the trauma would have been better. Oh, my god, that's amazing. How much freedom do you think people would have if these chucklebox got power? My money is on fuck. You gotta it's chuckleheads, according to our mayor. Chuckleheads, not chucklebox. Corten, I just feel like I had to correct you. Castro would send his blessings from. Oh. Chatters have been unknowingly competing for a gift sub. We are now in the final round. Meet and hard chat. Bonus points if you make Vienna lose their train of thought. Alright. It's all about their personal sense of freedom or is defined uh by them, not actual freedom. Freedom from the free spreading of a virus causing a pandemic and the irresponsible exposure of immunocompromised in children. Whereas vaccine mandate encourages vaccination and whittling down the pool of people from which of that variants can evolve from. I I mean, I know I'm like dead set against debate. And I don't wanna debate. I just want like a average, just your run-of-the-mill anti-vaxxer, and I wanna sit them down and just just ask them inquisitory questions to see like the limits of their like capacity to engage with some of these arguments. Cuz I never see them that like address just the general health and safety concern. I mean, they'll they'll obviously just like keep going back to like, well, like Nuremberg codes or some weird fucking thing that they come up with. But I I'm I'm curious to see like the the contours of their the way they like I uh what's the word I'm looking for? Like protect their beliefs? The contours, like wh- where are the limits of their their knowledge? And and what kind of like lines they repeat to themselves to prevent uh prevent cognitive dissonance from kicking in? You know what? But after what we just witnessed right here, I I'm going to I am gonna withdraw the letter that I was going to write about them not withdrawing letters because they've withdrawn their letter. And therefore I will withdraw my letter out of protest. Society. Uh, also on the the agenda was a discussion around having school resource officers in the classroom. And I have a feeling school resource officers means police. Reviews suggest police presence had negative impacts for some students. So you know, the the other thing that's really annoying here is what what this whole thing did was suck all the air out of the room. Where it's like, I don't know, I wanna learn about a discussion around having uh police officers in the classroom. Maybe that's a more important issue, you know? So it's like it would have been nice if like if if I if we had like uh a better community response locally. Where, say, we knew that issue was coming, cuz I didn't. Maybe there was other people who did, but I wish they informed me. And then we got like a thousand people to be out there with them, but drown them out, but not with like chants of like, screw you, anti-vaxers, but be like no more police in the classroom, you know what I mean? And then like then they'll have to write the message here where it'll say like protesters disrupt London School Board meeting with anti-police message, you know? Way better article, way better protest.
Thing is, though, like CBC wouldn't show up to a protest that we did. And that's also part of the whole like you know, how the media has propped up these people as well, where it's like they do cover them and they do make them seem like rebels and they do make them seem like edgy and cool. Um.
Then we gotta protest at the CBC. Occupy CBC.
Anyways, I don't think you've checked chat, but I made a I think you should dress up as the Jodker for Halloween. Yeah.
Wouldn't that just be me?
It would be you in white face.
Oh, god. Yeah, just me. Replace cops.
Whiter face.
Oh, god. That reminds me of uh there was a cartoon rendition of Clerks. And uh the premise of Clerks is they're clerks at the Quick Stop. And so the guy in the cartoon, this like rich evil rich person creates like an even bigger Quick Stop. And he calls it the Quick Er Stop. Quick Er.
Can we make a Patreon tier that um is Jody Dice's beard gr- beard green? Uh, for Halloween to be the Jodker, the Jodker tier?
Oh, my god. They don't mention that a huge percent of them are white supremacists. Well, I'm I mean, I will give credit to the London Free Press article that we uh read before, talking about the Chris Sky incident cuz they at least brought up his Holocaust enough, so and anti-Muslim bigotry. So like credit where credits due, at least the uh London Free Press, which is like owned by the National Post uh or Post Media at least had a better take than fucking the CBC. The board deferred making any decisions on the matter to its October twenty sixth meeting citing more need for community consultation. Well, I guess what we what I can say to anyone local, call your board people and tell them to to write write an even sterner letter than the one you were writing before. We need some real letter-writing action, okay, school board? Get on it. Meanwhile, the medical officer for Health Middlesex London, Dr. Chris Mackey, expressed support for the board's efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen in school. I mean, and then furthermore, you can call Chris Mackey, call him an asshole and tell him to find the works. And if he doesn't you're going to find his mother. Uh. The health unit is supportive of the Thames Valley District School Board's efforts to work with public health and increase vaccination rates among its staff members and eligible students, he said. There are at least thirty-two active cases of COVID nineteen connected to Thames Valley Schools. The latest cases were reported Tuesday with one at JP Robards Public School and two at Lord Elgin Public School, and it's worth noting Lord Elgin Public School is closed because of COVID nineteen, so. That was just the news that broke today. Maybe we should vaccinate our kids. Maybe that's actually a good thing. Maybe we should add the vaccine to all the the other vaccines that we already give them. Now, before before we call this a night, we're gonna read some, so I guess uh anti-hate the con, con, Canadian Anti-Hate Network. They uh watched a bunch of live streams for the protest last night, and so we're gonna see some of the comments that they highlighted here. So it says, speaking to live streamers, one man called for the protesters to use common law, suggested they arrest the school trustees for attempted murder and referred to communism. Kristen Nagel wore a shirt with sovereigns blazed on it. These are the comments from the street. We got storm the building, cops will back off. We need to protect our babies. Now in my eyes, this is war. Start banging on those windows. Just barge in.
You can press the arrow keys or uh the like arrow buttons instead of closing and opening every individual image. Okay.
I'm also tired. I didn't, my brain didn't. Many of the comments refer to sovereign citizen concepts as well as the matrix.
Helio. Fuck, yeah. I love the future.
And other conspiracy theories like the UN, NWO, and globalists, there is a lot of violent rhetoric as well indicating that these make it. Go in there and take over just like they did in the States. Right? Oh, yeah, I'm doing the same thing.
My god, press the fucking.
Dorm the place.
Gonna kill myself.
Yes. Imagine choosing money over children's lives and futures. Shake my head. I pray anyone involved in this gets what they truly deserve. Angry face.
Wonderful.
The first notable school board protests were in Alberta and they're spreading. Their new frontline is the schools. They've largely lost their fights with the masking of vaccines for the general public. School boards across the country are having to make decisions for the year and can feel the desperation ramping up in conspiracy movement. And then they have an explanation of sovereign citizen bullshit, but yeah, so uh this this seems fun. Seems fun that it might be uh ramping up. Uh, see what Drew has to say here. Stand For Thee has done it in Ontario earlier in the year, among others. I think Take Action Canada did something too, and I know some, including Odessa, I can't pronounce that, did it for Vancouver. But these, I guess, are uh the protests out front of school board. These are the people like organizing. Yep, so uh we get we get that to look forward to. And again, I mean, it's very, I mean, it should be obvious to anyone who cares about uh what's happening in your society. But uh I have kid in school. I want kid to be safe. I would prefer it if these people weren't uh putting pressure on the school board to do uh things that are against uh our interests as people with children attending these schools, you know? And it's also sad to me that like there are thousands of parents in the city, thousands of them. And I doubt that many of them are in support of this protest. In fact, there's there's two parents within this house right now that are staunchly against this protest.
Hello, my rebels. Hello, my rebels. I'm a good boy. I'm a weirdo.